Thank you. We'll get started this evening. And we will start this call to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be implied by the United States of America and every republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And approval of the agenda, anything to add, subtract?
Not for me, um, Velma. Make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Phil. All in favor? Okay. Public forum. This is the part of the agenda where anyone here can speak on any item not on the agenda. What, Joan?
Joan, make sure that's on, Joan. It's a green light on?
Yep.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Hope you get a good turnout.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else?
If the green light's on, you should be all set.
Yeah.
I'm sure he's aware of it, yes. Well, he has all the paperwork that indicates that it's a town road, yes. Well, I don't know who he's claiming that to, but no, that's not true.
Hasn't the sheriff spoken to him?
Yes, the sheriff has spoken to him on a number of occasions. A bunch of people within the sheriff's department have spoken to him. I had a lengthy discussion today with Deputy Harmon, who has spoken with him quite a few times, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, approve the minutes of May 13.
Make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Phil. All in favor? And committee and board reports there. I don't see any, however, in your packet, there is a copy of the information from the finance committee as of last week. And managers report.
Uh, yes, I, well, with the, with the chief here, I'll have him talk a little bit about Engine 44. I would have reported on it, but he can fill you in. Um, I know he spoke to them either sometime this week.
Good evening. Uh, Engine 44, it's still setting at Allegiance Fire Truck. Um, waiting parts at this point in time. They did get the approval from the adjuster. So, uh, just waiting on parts at this point in time.
Any idea how long that's going to take?
Um, they keep on saying a week, a week, a week, a week. So, um, when they did a inventory, um, they had one, but we needed two. So they didn't know when they would get in the, the second one. And that's for everything, the front axle shackles, the springs, which I find very weird, but that's what they were telling me.
So is that a, a week after they get the parts?
Um, I was told that it was supposed to be going in the shop this week, but it's sitting on the side of the road still, or in their parking lot. So, I spoke to the town manager tonight. Um, in the future, we might go to a different shop.
Yeah, I'm totally disappointed in the efforts that are being portrayed by the company in reference to this and the lack of communication with the chief, but I think we're in a situation now that, uh, they do have the expertise to repair it. And so I think we just have to be patient to make sure it gets done and we get the product back and in the condition that we expect it to be in. Um, you know, hopefully in the future, we won't have these events happen, but if they do, I think that we're going to go someplace else with our business.
I, I'm there, there emailing or calling weekly about the status of the truck. Any other questions?
No, but I do want you to make sure you thank your crew for their efforts someday. At the Historical Society had our Memorial Day event there and, uh, it was wonderful. It was really nice.
Yeah. Thank you. Pass it on.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, yeah, the next thing would be the Deputy Town Clerk's position. I've had, uh, probably six applicants. I've interviewed, um, we're going to interview at least three. I've already interviewed one. I have two more tomorrow, after which, um, it's my intent to make an offer to one of our applicants that I think will be interviewing here real soon. So, uh, all the applicants would have to give, uh, an additional two weeks notice, I think, from their previous employer, so, we're going to be at least, uh, two to three weeks away before we have somebody sitting in the, in the position. Um, the folks in the office are doing a great job. Um, our, uh, tax collector is also a motor vehicle agent, so she's picked up the slack, uh, very much so. Um, as a town clerk now is busy doing the, um, getting ready for the elections coming up, so, um, it seems to be working and we'll keep plugging along. In reference to the planner and the assessor, I had a meeting with, uh, SNP DC last week. Um, they have assigned, uh, one of their, um, planners right now to provide us services. They're, they're in the process of hiring a gentleman, uh, from the private sector who will be our permanent, uh, replacement for Lee J. He is working out of North Conway, I think, right now and should be on staff here soon, but, uh, they've, they've assigned, um, another gentleman who has over 20 years' experience working in, in the city of Portland, uh, in their planning office, so, um, I think he'll be able to fill in. Um, because of our contract, uh, with SNP DC, we're a little different than other communities within York County that do not contract out for planning services. So, in other words, the planner will be here one day a week, the planner will answer, uh, contact, uh, information to him. We'll, we'll screen most of the, uh, information here before it goes to him. He'll be able to provide the services that Lee J has been providing to us. So, I'm pretty happy about that. So, hopefully the new candidate will be on board here soon.
Have we been providing any planning services since Lee J has left?
Uh, we've given a couple inquiries, but not much at this point. Uh, very, very slow. I looked at the agenda for the planning board. It doesn't look like they have anything coming up until the second week, maybe the second or third week in June, so, um, you know, with the exception of that, um, I think we're in pretty good shape when it comes to that. Ann does a good job of screening that. Some of the questions that we can answer in-house, we'll, we'll answer them before we push things along to, um, people at SNP DC.
And, and Rich will definitely be here for town meeting, like, answering any ordinary questions?
Yeah, I believe he will be. Um, and I'm looking now to score, to coordinate a, uh, meeting between, um, James, the gentleman from SNP DC, and Rich, so they can get to know each other and then maybe have him come to the, the meeting, so, um, there's a method to the madness here. Uh, in terms of the assessor, I, I spoke with Beth again. Obviously, she's going out on medical leave here soon. Um, she's pretty much set at this point with the assessments that need to be done as of April 1st of this year, which the tax gets settled on. So, all those values are sort of entered into the, um, system. Uh, once the annual town meeting concludes and we have our true numbers, we will add those numbers to, um, to the data, uh, be able to provide, uh, probably as we have in the past, sometime in August or the 1st of September to set the tax, tax rate for the upcoming year, so. Um, she does not believe that we need somebody full-time. Um, she's reached out to Jim Thomas, who was the assessor for the city of South Portland, who has indicated that he would, uh, i- if needed, he would come in and assist, so. Um, and she'll be, uh, we have the ability to contact her via phone if we need any specific data from her, so. We should be okay moving forward throughout the summer. Uh, expect her back, hopefully, um, after eight weeks, but, um, we'll see how her knee, uh, in her recuperation goes, so. Uh, Terry, Terry's here tonight. Um, we have, uh, some modifications to the, uh, to the paving project that I wanted to have Terry go over. So, uh, you guys are aware of it, uh, before we get moving.
Uh, well, basically, um, what I'd like to do would be move, um, some paving scheduling around. Um, this year, we was planning on doing, um, New Road, Irving Road, Curtis Road, and the, uh, development down on, uh, off of River Road.
Maplewood.
Maple, uh, no, not Maplewood, it's, uh, yeah, I, it just.
Begins with an M.
Yeah. Well, anyway. Um, but I've had some inquiries about Clearview and Maplewood, because it is pretty bad in there. And I got looking at it and I went back in the files and back in the 10-year plan. That was supposed to have been paved back in 2018. And for some reason, and I, I think I know the reason why, it got dropped out. And I think it was when paving prices went through the roof. And I did a little research back in 2018, it was $62 a ton. And that same year, it went up to $72, it went up $10 a ton. So I think that's why that that got dropped out. We stayed with, you know, the most, um, traveled roads versus, you know, the ones that was less, less traveled. So it kind of got, um, dropped out of the schedule. And so, like I said, what I'd like to do would be able to take and I'll drop, because New Road, I think, can go one more year.
Yeah.
Without no problem. There's really, you know, there's few cracks here and there, there's some few edge breaks, but nothing that couldn't wait a year. So I'm thinking about dropping that out and also dropping out Curtis Road. Um, and then footage-wise, between Curtis and New Road, I should be able to pick up Maplewood and Clearview. So, I just, you know, wanted to run that by you guys and see what you think. I mean, because if you guys have been into Clearview and Maplewood, it's pretty bad. I mean, Maplewood up to the intersection, we shimmed. I don't think it was last year, I think it was the year before. And then, um, we also shimmed a little bit of Clearview. So, but that back section really needs to get shimmed and paved.
You're intended to, um, Curtis Road and New Road next year?
Yep.
I know New Road's pretty good, because there's a section of Curtis Road, though, that's kind of, it's pretty rotten, but kind of, it's not as bad as, as Clearview, that's for sure. I think Clearview certainly needs.
Irving Road, Irving Road right now is the worst. I, I can't let Irving Road go another, another year, because that's bad, especially by Dubois from, right from the beginning where it.
Yeah, that.
It, yeah, it's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Plus, we've done some patching there.
Yeah.
So, once you start patching, it's, you know, inevitable. So, you know, I'd still like to do Irving, but I'll drop Curtis and New Road out if I can. So. I, I believe Curtis Road would be good for another year, you know, because we haven't patched anything yet. It's, it's starting to get rutted. And there's plenty of cracks in it, but I think that will go another year.
Is that one section on Curtis Road where there's a huge dip, you know, and, and that people come flying down that road and that scares me.
I still think that I'll have enough, I'll do Middlebrook. That was the one I was trying to think.
That's it.
Yeah. Um, I, I can still do that.
Yeah.
But if it's okay with the board, that.
You know best. That's your role.
So, then there was one other thing. I just, I told Keith today that, uh, our excavator's broken down.
Oh.
So, um, right now, we're looking at about $5,000 to get it back up and running. The EGACoola went on it. And there is a, um, this was called a dosing valve in there, and they said that dosing valve alone is $900. Yeah, so, uh, Chadwick is, you know, getting the parts right now and, so. Nope, but just wanted to give you a little heads up.
They'll see it on one of the warrants, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, but like I said, I think that's why back in 2018, Clearview, Maplewood got dropped out, because like I said, paving prices went through the roof. It went up to $10 a ton in that year's time, so. Yeah. So, and then to cycle that back around is, it would just be, so I'd like to get it done.
We have a question.
Well, well, there's going to be a shim and a surface put on that, so it'll be basically over that. I mean, eventually it'll come back, but right now. That was just what's called a drag shim, and it's very, very, but we'll be putting down, you know, a couple hundred pavements, so.
Well, thank you.
Alrighty, thanks, Terry.
The next thing I had was, uh, we've circled back to the intersection of, of, uh, Brimstone and Limerick Road in, in terms of attempting to, um, uh, sign off on a quick claim deed um, for a small portion of property that we do not own. I think it's 392 square feet of, of property that we don't own that, um, that the road that, uh, is on. And it's been there, been that way for, for many, many years, but we've been talking about the, um, the, the redesign of that intersection. So it, so Brimstone comes to a T, so to speak, on, on Limerick, uh, once we get the, um, uh, once we get the pole, utility pole moved, but, um, the attorneys have been back looking at these, these documents and I, um, they look fine to me, but, um, I'll defer to, uh, select board member, Danilic, at the far end of the table to, to see if there's anything that we should, should not be adding to this particular document at this time.
I thought we took care of that, like, two years ago.
We, we agreed to it all, but the paperwork never got done.
And still isn't done. I mean, Bruce Reed is still looking at it for his client, who's the re- record owner of the property.
Yeah. But they, they were okay with what we were trying to do, if I remember right.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the issue was the non-conformity of the lot as it is. We're making it smaller.
Right.
Okay, so we had to deal with the adverse possession issue. That's why you've got.
That section is there, yeah. So, at this point, the, with the exception of Attorney Reed getting back to us, uh, whether it's okay, how's it looking to you?
I, I think it's fine. I mean, the description is fine. You got to attach the survey to it, so, uh, that's fine. You just got to fill in the blanks here and, and get, um, Mr. Wimmer to, how do you say it?
Okay.
To agree to sign it, and we just have to accept it.
Okay, good.
Well, at the rate that consolidated has moved, it's probably going to be another.
Yeah.
Another bunch of birthdays before that ever happens, so.
Well, we, we had a little bit of traction today in terms of, uh, we reached out to, um, Charter Communications, the Governance Affairs person, and she, she got right back to me, so, which was, uh, said that. Yeah, said that, uh, she'd be getting her, uh, construction crew, um, to give us a phone call, so. I sent it to Terry and both Terry and I have our fingers crossed, but hopefully it will occur.
It's amazing when you think about it and you're right around town and you look at how many poles are cut that are just hanging on their lines, all over the place.
And, and finally, for me, the, um, the, the candidates, as you know, we had, uh, an opening for RSU 21 School Board Member. Um, we posted and the nomination papers had to be back today by 5:30. We received one package back from, um, from the applicant with, from the school board member whose, whose term is up. She's decided to, Brittany Girth has put her name in, so, uh, the clerk will put together a, um, a paper ballot uh, for that one-year position and her name on it, and then obviously there'll be a write-in section if people want to write some name in. Um, and then they'll be available on June 11th. Uh, we've had people that have come in early to vote and have asked what we're going to do about that. Um, what the clerk is going to do is, and is going to be sending them a, uh, notification that we now have a ballot once it's ready and, um, probably send them one if they want to sign, you know, uh, vote or come in and vote on the 11th. So, we have people that have already voted, so we want to make sure they have an opportunity to, to vote if they so desire. So that gives us at least one, um, to fill that spot, so that will give us a full complement of, uh, school board moving forward.
Somebody for those two days or something like that?
Technically, you may be correct. I'm not quite sure if, if, if we exercise the authority is going to make much of an impact on what's happening. So.
You know, I sent out an email to everybody on, I had a discussion with the chair and the, and the superintendent. I don't know if you talked to superintendent at all, but, you know, they were like, it's really not a whole lot going on and so, you know, at this point, not sure if we're okay with not appointing somebody. I think probably got, what, one meeting left, maybe. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, do you have anybody you would like to appoint tonight? Well, she's still, she's still. Oh. I got you. We can certainly ask. See what she does.
Please.
Yeah.
Chip Bassett, so, it, it, I just want to make sure I understand, uh, the, because of the date of the resignation of Aaron, uh, the select board is required to appoint somebody two days before someone elected on the 11th. Okay. Um, so your suggestion was that Ms. Girth might resign her position a couple days early? And then the boards appoint her? Correct.
That she may get elected.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll reach out to the clerk tomorrow and see, you know, what we can possibly do. I'm all set now.
Yep. How about the onto-business mass gathering permit for the ACG?
Yes, you have the, the permit in your possession. Um, this is for their annual September 21st, uh, um, Trail Fest. Appears based on the, uh, permit that's been submitted, it's pretty much as it always has been. Henry's here. Uh, he's the one that submitted the, the permit. If you wanted to discuss it with him any further.
I make a motion. We approve and wave the fee.
Motion's made by Dan, seconded, seconded by Tom. Okay, any questions? All in favor? Just like that?
Let me send it on down. You guys can sign it. Second page. Oh, perfect. We'll have to get a better copy.
That was a great day, Joan.
There you go.
Next, we have a, um, application for a special amusement permit for, uh, Bentley Saloon. Uh, traditionally, uh, obviously, they, um, provide to us, um, their hours of operation and, and the things that they're going to be doing. Uh, it's pretty standard that they've done in the past. Um, the paperwork has been signed and presented.
Open at 8:30 AM on Sundays?
Yeah, they have breakfast. They do breakfast.
Yeah, I know they do breakfast, but I didn't think that they were doing live music and karaoke at 8:30 in the morning.
They're probably covering their bases.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I've been there for breakfast and I think the only music is coming from their speaker system. They didn't have anything, any live music or anything.
They do have a good breakfast.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve as submitted.
Okay, motion made by Dan, seconded by Phil. Okay, motion made by Dan, seconded by Phil. Any questions? All in favor? Take care of that.
And uh, finally, we have the um, application for uh, liquor license for beer, wine and spirits. Um, from Bentley Saloon. All the necessary paperwork has been filled out um, and signed. It's here for your review and uh, decisions.
So their last, last year's expired. When did it expire? Cause their last year's is still.
Right, they're, they're, they're way ahead of the curve, yeah. This expires.
Yeah.
There's one that they're working on now, September is a September.
Yeah, but they listed, but they've listed dates from. Last year's permit, right? Sunday, May twelfth, Tuesday, May twenty-first, Saturday, May fourth.
And I think they just list this every year.
Yeah, he really should clean that up, this, to coincide with his expiration date.
Sure, we can make that, that note.
I mean, I'm okay with it, but it just doesn't jive. So I asked the same question last year, and that's when we came up with the expiration date was in September.
But it very well may be that these dates haven't been, haven't been set there, event coordinator may not have these dates. Set in stone by then. These may not be set until. You know, while they're closed in the wintertime from October until they reopen in, in March or April. So they may not know these dates and these things when.
We'll get a new list.
Yeah, I just, you know, just to clear up the dates of that, you know, cause we're approving this now, but if you look at this paperwork. You think it's already happened.
You're talking about this, this piece in the back.
Yeah, yeah, and his, his submission says for um, you know, specified approved events. And these are the specified approved events, and these dates have already happened and they're coming now. Correct.
Yeah.
Right, right. That's a separate issue. But then why's he got, then why's he got events? Yeah. And parking areas during specified approved events. That's what he wrote here and these are his specified. Yeah, yeah. It's just the paperwork is confusing.
You make that a motion?
I gotta make every motion.
No?
Yeah. That's. Yeah, and, but he states here, and parking area, he states in his application here, and you're right, in the years past, he's had a, uh. He's had a, I don't know if it was separate or not, but I know that he's had a showing of where all the consumption is gonna take place. I don't remember if it was separate.
Because his license for last year doesn't expire until nine twenty-three. And that means that of these, this parking area, these rides, only the last two, October fifth and October thirteenth would have to be on a new, on a new. Yeah, just those last two. The other ones would have been on last year, yeah.
Right, that's.
Yeah.
It, it, on both ends, you know, the beginning and the end. So this expires in September, but he's got October dates here. So it just. And we're approving it now and he's got May date, things have already happened. So I think we just need to somehow clean that out.
You just need a, a updated list.
Well, I. I don't know if we even need the list. On this application? Right, yeah.
I'll look at the past approvals that we've had, and if you're recalling something else that was added in addition and.
Well, I questioned it last year on, because the dates didn't match and I don't know, I must have thought it was okay or whatever, but. Questioning it again, so.
Right.
Yeah, those are the specific approved events that he needs it, but, but the dates don't. I mean, his, his liquor license that we signed last year would cover most of these because this doesn't expire until nine twenty-two. So most of these events.
Well, they may have been on last year's list. They might have just attached last year's list, I'm not sure. But essentially, they're requiring, they're asking for the same things they've had in the past, but I think the list is erroneous. But they are, they are seeking specific, uh, po- using of the parking area during specific approved events.
Yeah, and when you look at that list, he said aside, aside from the above dates, Bentley Saloon has requested that we be granted permission for, some.
I see it.
April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Through October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, they're using that same list every year, yeah.
So. Man, I don't have a problem with, you know, giving him this, but it's gonna be.
It's gonna be correct.
So do you wanna, you wanna hold it until we get it? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't affect what they, they already have approval now, so.
We think. Wait, were we supposed to do this quick claim deed?
No, as, as Tom had indicated, that we still haven't heard from.
Oh, this is the, yeah.
Yeah, the folks haven't, uh, their attorney has not reviewed it and got back to us yet.
This, this is the Brimstone Road.
Yep. This memorandum from the York County Budget Committee is just for our information.
Right, they, well, I have a public hearing coming up and uh, they provided what our actual number is going to be. For our um, for our payment to the uh, county budget. And so they've provided that to you and the bottom of that page, I, I provided what FY. Twenty twenty-four's price was and what the new one is for the upcoming year, which is about seventeen thousand more than the previous year, so. Um. As I indicated prior to the meeting, that for tax rate purposes, that ends up anywhere between forty-eight. And fifty-one or fifty-two cents per thousand on our tax rate to, to fund county government.
So what's it in, listed in the book as?
Not listed in the book, uh, unless it's under the overall budget number. I don't think I listed it.
This is the one we need to sign. We're signing for their.
I thought we already sent it down for sign- signatures. I think that's your copy.
Oh, jeez.
If it's in there, it's on, for two ninety-seven and some change is what we were told until I got this the other day, so.
Yeah.
Um, it would have been up, it, based on what they've now given us, would be about four, about forty-four hundred more than it was the previous year, uh, previous. Um, uh, discussion that they had with us during the budget um, process. But I think what they're doing here is Monday, June tenth, they have a public hearing, so if you wanna attend. Um, feel free to do so.
Okay, we have payroll and payable warrants. Dan, you wanna pass that down to Phil? You make that motion? Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil. For the payroll and payable warrants, all in favor? Yep, great, people can get paid. Any other business? Yep.
I know I asked you about the uh, the uh, compactor that's still on track to, to get here.
We do have on, in posi- in reference to that, uh, we do have people that are submitting their punch cards to us and.
Good.
Uh, putting that list together and we'll do it as one bigger, maybe two big events and we'll, we'll process those checks accordingly.
I gotta use mine before the end of the month. I got like thirty punches left. Got a bunch of junk. Big stuff.
Anything else? No, motion to adjourn? All in favor? You got that?
Got it.